Call the meeting to order. Start with the prayer today. Good dear God, today as we open this session, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the stay of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, purely public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Ruck.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
That's nine present.
Do we have any moments of silence, Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for John Francis Dowling, a lifelong resident of Lowell. He graduated from Lowell High School with the class of 1959. John proudly served with the United States Army, and he retired as a lieutenant from the Lowell Fire Department in 2002 after 30 years of service. Mr. Dowling was a real estate developer in the city of Lowell. He was a communicant of St. Rita's Church in Lowell. He was president of the Lowell Firefighters Club for 30 years and a lifetime member of the Lowell Elks. John managed the Lowell Firefighters Golf Tournament for many years to raise money for the Shriners. Besides his wife Joan, he is survived by his daughter Cheryl and her husband Arthur, his daughter Debbie Dowling and his daughter Colleen and Dennis Carmier, two grandchildren Brandon and Kylie, and his lifelong best friend Philip Ballamotis. He was predeceased by his son-in-law, the late John LaRocque. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed, and I'd like to turn the rest over to Counselor Danny Ruck.
Counselor Ruck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Mercia. Just quickly on Mr. Dowling. He was really one of the unsung heroes of the Mother's Day floods back in 2006. He was retired at the time, but donated much of his equipment, his vehicles, his own money towards the residents of Potackaville that were so much affected by the flood during that time. Just all-around terrific individual that, over his entire life, gave back to the city of Lowell in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Counselor Mercia and Counselor Ruck really recapped the wonderful life that John Dowling and his family and all the contribution that he has made to the city. I'd just like to echo their remarks and express my condolences to the family and all the wonderful things that he did for the city, all behind the scenes most of the time, but he's going to be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Roger L. Dumont. Roger was born in Lowell and received his education through Lowell Trade School and Lowell Tech, having his associate degree in criminal law and his bachelor's degree in public service. Roger served in the United States Marine Corps from 1954 until 1960, and the United States Army from 1960 until 1962, where he was stationed in Panama as a military policeman. Roger was a police officer for the city of Lowell, retiring in 1993 after 28 years of dedicated service. He was a successful businessman in the Lowell area for 40 years, having owned and operated the Merrimack Inn. He was a member of the Lowell Exchange Club, where he served two terms as president and member of the draft board for 18 years. He is survived by his former wife Priscilla, two sons Chris and Stephen, his brother Gerald Dumont, and his wife Mary Ann, and his sister Dolores Dumont, and his eight children and his two step-grandchildren and his two step-grandchildren and his great step-grandchild. Roger was the father of the late Ronald and Sean Dumont, and brother of the late Frankie Dumont, and grandfather of the late Noah Dumont. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends, as well as we also offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just like to offer one moment of silence from the City of Lowell for Marine Sergeant Johani Rosario Pachado. She was the proud Marine from Lawrence, Massachusetts, who was among the U.S. service members killed at the airport in Kabul, Afghanistan. If we can dock in the chambers? Mayor's business, communication, remote Zoom participation need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Conway. Counselor Conway? I mean, Counselor Elliott?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I request suspension of the rules to take two items out of the agenda? There are a number of people that are here to speak on behalf of these motions. The first one, no particular order, 11.3?
Three, is it?
Correct. 11.3 and then 11.4. Sorry.
Sure. Motion by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Noon to take motions out of order. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you.
Okay. So, motion by Counselor Elliott, 11.3, request city council vote to recommend to the Board of Parks to dedicate the basketball courts at Father Maguire Park in honor of Cheryl Saber, in recognition of her 27 years of community and volunteer service to running the SJA Basketball League. Seconded by Counselor Ruck. Counselor Elliott?
I believe-
Do you have speakers? Do you want the speakers?
Yeah, there are some speakers. I would welcome to have the speakers come before my remarks, please.
Ryan Hogan.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Ryan Hogan. I'm here to talk to you about a pretty amazing woman that I know. This individual has continuously put her wants and needs on the back burner for the kids in Lowell and the surrounding cities and towns.
Good.
Okay. She has continuously put her wants and needs on the back burner for the kids in Lowell and the surrounding cities and towns. She's been doing this for almost 30 years. See, I was lucky enough to play in the SJA Summer League at Father Maguire Park in Lowell when I was a kid. Now, my kids playing it, I coaching it, and I'm on the Board of Directors for it. All of that would not be possible without Cheryl Saber. See, Cheryl continuously puts in her own time cleaning up the park, weeding, planting flower beds, painting benches, basically whatever the park may need, Cheryl does. Because of this and many, many more reasons, I'd love to see the courts at Father Maguire Park put in her name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Masha.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, Madam Manager. I'm delighted to be here. Should, or should say, when this passes, this would be a great honor for a great woman, Cheryl Saber. I've known Cheryl for years, and her running this league for 27 years has been incredible. She's put her heart and soul into it. She's like the Energizer Bunny, and generations of kids have played. My kids have played, and others, I think hundreds and probably thousands have gone through that. There's one other court in Potackaville, and that one's named after Father bourgeois. So I think it's appropriate that we have one named after a priest and one named after a holy woman. She just is an incredible sports nut and dedicated to the kids, and I think after 27 years, this is a great honor for her. Thank you.
Steve Lyons.
No, I don't think Steve's made it. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor, but if I may, the speakers talked about Cheryl in the same way that I will. Cheryl and I were actually classmates at St. John Duck School, so it's very much an honor to present this on her behalf as well as so many others. Cheryl, her kids and I, our kids play together, we coach together. I coached her daughter. She's been a gym teacher and athletic director, excuse me, at St. John Duck School for as long as I can remember. I think that's where the 30 years come in. She and her husband Al, cannot leave out Al. Al has been right by her side and just as involved. They have three wonderful children, they have grandchildren, but as Ryan and Henry alluded to, in all of her endeavors, it's 110% for the city and the programs that she has run for the kids in the city. It's amazing. I think Henry's right. I think it's in the thousands. Neighborhood cleanups, park cleanups, adopted island fundraisers, walkathons, you name it, Cheryl just gives her time and energy and effort for so many causes. But in particular, what has been true and true to her heart was the Economic League and the Summer Basketball League, certainly at Father Maguire Park. So I did speak to a higher power, her boss, for many, many years, Sister Priscilla Malo. She is 100% thinks this is a wonderful idea. So, you know, Cheryl has coached everything, track, baseball, softball, soccer, you name it. So I think this is, this would be an honor for her and her family. Al attended her father, just long, long-time, long-life residence of Potackaville, and has spent thousands of hours at that court. They also built the concession stand with the help of the city for the, to provide bathrooms, and I could go on and on, but the motion is, I know this is to Board of Parks that makes this decision, and I hope my colleagues look favorable upon it and recommend it to the Board of Parks, and then the Board of Parks does name this for an individual that is truly worthy of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer Counselor Elliott's wonderful motion to the Board of Parks. Now, they meet on the last Wednesday in the month, which will be September 29th. If it's possible, we could call and try to get that on the agenda, but I know that Counselor Elliott and myself would be honored to represent this motion at the Board of Parks, being the chairperson of Parks. I don't feel that there's a need to bring it there. I think they supersede whatever we say anyway, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ruck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a terrific motion. You know, I have coached against Mrs. Saber. My daughter has played for her multiple sports, and anybody that does as much for children in the city as she has, rightly so, deserves to be honored with such an naming. So I'm very happy to support this, and I look forward, there was a motion filed a couple meetings ago to clean up Father Maguire Park, to make some repairs to it, which I know is underway. So hopefully, when that's all said and done, we can have a wonderful ceremony for Mrs. Saber. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Elliott for putting this motion forward. I too will support this motion. My, a couple of my boys, they play in the SJA League for a couple summers, and, but they love it. They love the kids there, that the coaches there. Just during the summertime, so just keep them off the street. And my boys, they grew to love basketball to this very day, so I would definitely support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, Sav. Second motion, Counselor Elliott?
11.7, Mr.?
Oh, seven, not four?
Yeah, no, it's regarding parking on Mount Hope Street.
Okay. So 11.7, not four?
Correct. My bad.
Okay. Counselor Elliott requests Transportation Subcommittee meet regarding designating parking spots on Mount Hope Street for the church between White Street and Fourth Ave. Seconded by Counselor Ruck. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are registered speakers as well, and our pastor, as well as Levinia-
Pastor Duane?
Yes, sir. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to stand in front of you. My name is Pastor Duane W. Wheeler. I'm the pastor of the Greater Deliverance Temple Church here in the city of Lowell, Massachusetts. But I stand here today not asking for my church, but I'm asking for the church at 125, oh, excuse me, 125, apologize, y'all making me nervous with all these cameras. Mount Hope Street. At that facility is the Fusion Church, and within the Fusion Church, it houses the second-largest food bank within our city, which is the House of Hope. And I sit here with the executive director of the House of Hope here today. The House of Hope feeds approximately 300 to 400 families a week, and approximately 3,800 people a week. I am asking you for this parking, for this parking exception because there are trucks that need to come in during the week to bring the food that is distributed to the people, and then also on Saturdays is the largest day in which there's hundreds of cars that we feed and we give boxes of food, approximately a week's amount of food given to every person that comes through that door. It is a hardship at times because it is near the university and school is back in session. So that's why we are asking you for this parking exception and have this parking just used for church services. Thank you very much for your time.
And Levinia Ferusa?
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to express what's going on on 125 Mount Hope Street. My name is Levinia Ferusa. I am the executive director of a Dwelling House of Hope Food Pantry. It's, Dwelling House of Hope is under or is operating at Fusion Church. We work seven days a week. We open seven days a week, and it's one of the busiest food pantry in Lowell, and it caters for so many people from different countries. And we have been having difficulties when it comes to parking. When trucks comes to offload food, we have so much problems. We have upgraded that we now work with Greater Boston Food Bank, which also sends trucks from Boston for us. That's how we have grown to be so big, because Merrimack Valley Food Bank could not serve us. So I just want to express how big we have grown up, serving the people in Lowell and in the Merrimack Valley. So we really have a problem with parking. Between White Street and Fourth Street, cars, they come especially on Saturday, and they block that street. But when we are trying to put boxes in cars, there will be cars all over in the main road, and it's very dangerous because other cars will be coming from the other side. I got a picture, a video, which I even took and sent to a Counselor Elliott so that he can show you how dangerous it is, because something can happen, and we don't want to be answerable. That's why we're pleading with the city if they can let us use 125 Mount Hope Street for the food pantry and the church. And even when it's snow time, it's very difficult, because they park, we try to clean up the street, the cars will be parked over there, and we cannot do anything about it. So we need help. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott?
Pastor Duane and Levinia said it best. Just so, just so the administration knows, on White Street, there is residential sticker parking on what I would think would be considered the north side. It's the south side that there, that there is available parking, and what happens, as Pastor and Levinia mentioned, there's a food bank, and they have a wonderful system. It's not the first time I've been over there to see the, to see the cars parked, but there's student parking in large part from, I don't really know where, because there's ample parking for the multifamilies that are on one side. Again, that there are stickers. There's also residential parking on Fourth Ave, and the church does have one, two, three parking lots for their services. This is specifically for their system where people come up, patrons come up, they get a number, they go park their car along, around the side of the building, they go to the food pantry, it's put in a box, they come around and pick it up. It's a very fluent system. They just need available parking. So when cars are parked, they're literally in the street, and it's interruption. I think it's something that, that we should do for the city, excuse me, for the church, to make it a smooth operation considering how many people they serve and the dedication of all the volunteers. So that's the motion. We can talk about a little bit more at the Traffic Subcommittee, Transportation Subcommittee, Madam Manager, but I think in large part dedicating that one little strip for that church will go such a long way to ease the challenges that they face versus the enormous work that they do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great motion by Counselor Elliott, and you described very well the flow of traffic. I want to thank Pastor Wheeler and Levinia Ferusa for coming to speak tonight, and you're doing a fantastic job at the House, the Dwelling House of Hope. It's, the program has grown tremendously, and I've gone there a couple times over the summer, even on the weekend. There's about three, when I was there, about 300 vehicles that come through and with no issues. That's during the summer without any vehicles that park in place. It's a safety issue to leave that area clear, and especially like Counselor Elliott mentioned, you know, it's all outside, don't go inside the building to pick up food for health reasons and so forth. So I know this is going to the Transportation Subcommittee, but I am supporting- but I am supporting this motion all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this day and age where we have people that need help tremendously and we have other people that are willing to devote their time and energy and food, we should do everything as a city to make their request happen. So I support this motion. And for that reason alone, I think we ought to do what we can to help people that help people. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a good motion. Thank you to the speakers. We've probably all been there at one point or the other and you do a tremendous service to the community and so efficient the way those cars come through. And it's amazing how you empty your kitchen out and Monday, Tuesday, you fill it back up. So God bless you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Being seven o'clock. Okay. All right, we'll go to City Clerk business first. Need a motion to accept the place on file. There are minutes of the Transportation Subcommittee, August 24th. City Council Regular Meeting, August 24th. Zoning Subcommittee, September 7th for acceptance. Motion by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor? Being seven o'clock, we'll do the general public hearing. Ordinance to create position and salary of DEI Officer in the City Manager's office. I'll open the hearing. All those in favor? In favor? All those in favor? That portion is now closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. Opposition? Opposition, that portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Roll call?
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's nine aces.
Mr. Mayor, since we are on these matters, I could suspend the rule and take 11.8 out of order, sir, because it's related to this?
Sure. Motion by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Mercy to suspend the rules to take. Which one out again?
11.8, sir.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Noon, 11.8. Request City Manager provide an update regarding hiring process to fill the ARPA Finance Manager, as well as the process and the timeline for the DEI Officer. Seconded by Counselor Mercy, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, we done a great job in, you know, creating this position and the manager's and her team because it's very important. So as we going forward, you know, I was wondering if we can really, Madam Manager can give us an update as to where we at on this? Because this is an, we were talking about DEI and the APA Finance Manager. This is a very crucial and important position, this too. With DEI, we are talking about, you know, an individual or this individual will ensure that a city will have, you know, a successful development in, you know, in terms of implementation of, you know, the report, the HR report, the HR audit report, as well as making sure that the issue addressed issue of diversity and inclusion. This person is really crucial for this position. As well as the Finance Manager, the APA, the federal money that we receive in installment. That's $76 million. You know, we want to know this person, who this person will be and hoping that this person will get out there, listens to the resident and nonprofit organization as well as other. As we go ahead to really disperse this money and monitor how this money being spent per the federal guideline. So that's why I put this motion out. I know that, I have a feeling that this position has already been closed. So, but, you know, the managers and her team can give us an update on that. And that's the reason for the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Thank you. Back to the agenda. Communications from City Manager. Any questions on motion response? A, hiring health inspectors. Counselor Elliott?
Madam Manager, thank you for the report. Pardon me. As you know, as a member reflect, it's imperative to get additional inspectors with, you know, the challenges certainly brought on by the students as well as other, some other, you know, tenants or people that rent, quite frankly. So getting another health inspector, I see that the position will be posted and it's going to be funded, you know, with American Recovery Money. On behalf of the residents in that area who have been, you know, I was on a Zoom call, we were on a Zoom call last night with the Tuckerville Citizens Council and the issue came up. I sent you Texas, I think, pictures of barrels that are overflowing and trash. So it's, this will be very helpful. And I think it's, it's an important measure that we take to help this area. You know, and I know it's citywide, but I hope they focus on where the problems are now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else on this motion? Any questions on motion response B? Counselor Samaras, pine school entrance landscape?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the City Manager for such quick action on this motion. The, you sent out the DPW and the School Department to clean up the area. I've heard nothing but praise from many people happy that it's been done. But I also like your last part of the statement. DPW and the School Department will continue to maintain these areas. Thank you very much for quick action and making a lot of people happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on response C? School, street, cemetery wall. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Clancy, for the timely report. I put the two properties of interest in one motion because the two properties are pretty much next to each other. On the property, on the issue of the cemetery, I understand that the city was already looking to repair and retain money in the amount of $200,000 because it's a historical platform. And the city was ready to work on that. And the part of the cemetery that is on, that's a budding school street that was caused by a motor vehicle accident. And there was no money from the insurance company to, like better word, reimburse to repair that. But I understand the city is still planning to fix the cemetery. But with $200,000 available to do more work, is that going to be sufficient?
Thank you. I do believe Commissioner Clancy is on, but through you to Counselor Chow and the council. The $200,000 will be a start to design because these have to be engineered because they are retaining walls. It may not be enough to fix both. When this started, we had the one wall and now we have two. But we are going to seek other funds to try and accomplish that. The other property, as you mentioned, is private property. And I know the city has been working with the property owner over, about trying to get that property fixed as well because that's a serious matter.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And on the issue of the private property, I know it's been, been a couple of years now. And the retaining wall just fell to the sidewalk and onto the street, which it's closed the sidewalk for students to walk back and forth to the stock loads at school. And on top of that, the vehicles have to veer around it. I see that in report here that the property owner has been notified through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager. Just, I don't understand that it's been taken this time for them to respond. I just can't imagine if it was a private residence, or another residence for that matter, or a small business, if they violate some kind of code, they would be penalized? Have these property owners, have they been penalized or put on like a stricter notice rather than just notification that they have to fix it? Some kind of penalty?
Yeah, it is a progressive matter, Counselor. So notice is given. The, I believe, Inspection Services has been working with the property owner. However, fines do kick in at some point once it appears that they're not, they don't have a plan. And at that point, the fines get assessed daily. I believe it's $300 a day for not taking care of the problem. So you can see that though, the fines add up quickly and it's in the property owner's best interest to try and address the problem.
Thank you so much. And I look forward for an updated report to see how soon this can be resolved, just for the safety of the residents in the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank Counselor Chow putting this motion on because it's, you know, I go by this so many times and it's amazing how, how poorly it looks. Not only looks, but the danger that's involved there. I see people walking around, little kids and so forth. And I'm glad that we're finally getting that addressed. And it's too bad it's taken this length of time to, to fix this, fix this problem. So again, I'm glad we're addressing this and hopefully we'll be able to put this back to where it should be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a quick question, Madam Manager. Is that like through a condo association or is that?
It is.
Is there a different owner on that property?
I don't know that the law department knows.
And then we also have the same thing on Nesma Street with progression with that?
Yeah, on Roger Street, yeah. That's, that's a little more complicated. Someone did fix the wall, but didn't produce an engineering study. And because it is quite a significant retaining wall, they have to produce the engineering study so that we can be assured that its integrity is sound and it won't collapse again. However, it's my understanding that the property changed hands while this has all been going on. So there's a new owner who we are now dealing with. And there may be litigation involved between the new owner and the old owner. But we are on that one as well, Counselor. Because though it looks like it's repaired and it well may be, we can't just open the sidewalk if we can't be certain that it's safe. So we're working on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize to the council board. I was just made aware that we have a couple of people here that are waiting to speak on one of my motion on the Moore School. So I would like to request a suspension of rule, if that's possible.
Just mention the rule to allow speakers to speak on a motion by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Noon. Which motion, Counselor Chow?
That's 11.14.
Okay. Counselor Chow, request City Manager investigate installing a fence around the Skullin, Skullin Park, Moore School playground due to safety concerns of parents and staff. Seconded by Counselor Elliott, Counselor Chow? Okay, we have registered speakers. You want them to go first?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Deborah Core.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing that. I noticed you did it and I just wanted some help. Yes, my name is Deborah Core. I live at 24 Merrimack Way in Tingsboro. I am a proud Moore Tiger. I've been a member of the Moore School family for 17 years as a kindergarten teacher, which is the best job in the whole wide world. I'd like to thank you, City Council members, Mayor Leahy, and especially Counselor Chow for bringing this motion forward to help protect our students. My goal here tonight is to change the word investigate to install. It is imperative that a playground fence be installed to protect our children during recess. We have asked for a fence at the Moore School since our school was built in 2009. Our current principal, the amazing Dr. McLaughlin, has advocated and lobbied, made phone calls, invited people to come to the school to have a fence installed and to have granite stones removed that have caused horrific injuries to our children. We've been told in the past that it's property lines that are the issue. School property versus city property. But we are one Lowell. We need us to be one Lowell. If we know a fence protects children, then someone should be able to authorize the installation. Please take a moment and visualize our playground. Behind me is the Moore School. Over here is Moore Street lined with parked cars. Here's the playground. Please feel free to get up and run around. Down here is a beautiful tree and a residential fence. Every day at 10:30, please come by and join us. We escort almost 100 kindergarten students out to play, five and six-year-olds. We work diligently to keep playground balls at this end. We put cones out. We have staff all around the playground. Here in the middle, they play tag. Now just imagine any five-year-old kicking a ball, which they're not allowed to do because we want them safe, and running after that ball. And me personally, running after them yelling, "Stop." Only they don't understand me or they think I'm playing tag with them. And they only stop as I am seeing a car go by because I get in front of them. Yes, that has happened. Please, please, see this like we see it every single day. And it is not just playing ball. Someone might say, "Don't have the balls out there." I said, "They think we're playing tag." Dog walkers come by innocently enough. The children go running over. Luckily, I have not been there and seen any unfortunate incidences. But again, we're on patrol. Okay? Picture huge delivery trucks. Again, not every day, not every week, but certainly since I've been there. Huge delivery truck starting to back on to the playground and only stopped because teachers and staff yelling and screaming. Kids at recess, a delivery truck. We need a fence. I have driven around Lowell. I have visited the beautiful schools that are here. This summer, I had the opportunity to be at the Bailey School, escorting kindergarten children to their playground. It's surrounded in a beautiful black chain link fence with beautiful playground equipment. And it is far away from any moving cars. In fact, the only cars are parked, they're school employees. We all care about the safety of our students. You show that to us all the time with your votes and your motions. Please come together on this as one Lowell and do this for our amazing children. Please make sure we overcome any obstacles to a fence and make sure it's installed. I don't want to say yesterday, but please make it happen soon. Please make sure you support this cause as if your children or grandchildren or relatives played there each day. Please lobby City Manager Donahue to install the fence. And I thank you for your time. I hope you come and visit.
We have Danielle Savoy via Zoom.
Good evening, everyone, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Madam Manager. My name is Danielle Savoy, and I live at 18 Oakland Street in Lowell. I am a Lowell Public School parent and teacher. Specifically, I'm a Maury School kindergarten teacher. And I'm here tonight with my colleague to speak to you, to advocate for a fence around our play area. This is my perspective. Over the past two years, every member of this council, every member of our school committee, every single administrator at the city and school level, and every last member of our educator and parent community has come together to work tirelessly to develop, implement, and execute extraordinary measures to ensure the safety of our Lowell Public School children in the face of this historic pandemic. And yet, in the blink of an eye, an unimaginable tragedy could occur during our recess time that a fence, a simple fence, could prevent. Clearly, our student safety is a top priority in this city. We know this. We follow strict protocols to minimize the chance that children will get sick from one another. Teachers are trained yearly on how to use EpiPens and how to recognize signs of an allergic reaction. We are trained to recognize the first signs of stress and anxiety that could lead to emotional or mental unwellness in children. We practice fire drills, soft and hard lockdowns, and other emergency drills, so that at the end of the day, we can confidently say that we are doing everything in our power to protect children. In my opinion, surely a fence around the Maury School play area is a logical extension of the safety plan that our city and our school already works diligently to uphold every day. Please vote in favor of this motion, and beyond this motion, so beyond the investigation, to the actual installation of a safety fence for the Maury School children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before this council tonight.
All set. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to both registered speakers. And I had a few teachers, staff, and parents call me on this issue. I wasn't made aware that anybody would register to speak, so thank you for letting me know. I didn't mean to make you wait this long. The school playground and the park, they're both very beautiful, green grass, trees, flowers, very, very beautiful. The playground and the park are located between Maury, on the corner of Maury Street and Shaw Street. And last year, Madam Manager approved through traffic engineering study for a four-way stop sign on Shaw Street and Waller Street because there were many vehicles that were speeding. Since the four-way stop sign been put on Shaw Street also, it helps with the traffic a little bit. But the playground and the park, they're open field, and both registered speaker described it so well. Anything could happen, and we want to prevent anything or one thing from happening. There's a couple instances that I heard of. You know, this is a neighborhood school. Some students, they walk to school, and when they play outside on the playground, they, the young kids, they say, "Hey, my house is, I can see my house," they decide to run back home. So luckily, one of the staff or teacher noticed that and stopped the child from running home. If you are a staff or teacher, you're missing the kid. Maybe not the worst thing that the kid is running home, but you would have a heart attack, basically, to miss a child. And as the registered speaker mentioned, they could run across the street. Strangers could walk on the sidewalk and talk to them, and we don't want anything bad to happen. So I think it's important to have for the safety of these children to have fence around the park and the playground. And on the issue of the granite boulders, they're beautiful. I went to visit the site myself. Very great addition to the park, but maybe they're not great for safety for the children because they run around, they might fall down. And I heard an instance or situation where one of the child fell and hit the granite, and you know, nothing was serious, but caused, you know, it break his head a little bit, crack open a little bit, caused blood. You know, it's a minor injury after the fact. But, you know, we want to prevent this type of injuries, this type of dangerousness, maybe keep the granite boulders, but we were gonna install the fence, move it to the outside of the fence. And I understand it's a city park, it's a public park. Maybe around the fence have gates for after-school, the public can utilize it as well. I think it's of utmost importance. I think we neglect the safety of these children and families for so long, and through the grace of God and luck, there's nothing dangerous or serious dangerous that happens to these kids. So let's not wait till that happens. Let's keep these children safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If for any reason I had doubt to think that I might not want to support it because of the cost, after hearing those two speakers, those tremendous women, honest to God, they were so eloquent. They were right on target. I don't know what you feel is the cost to save even one life. When a child sees a ball and they're playing a game and they run after it, my God, I think it would be wonderful to have that fence. Every single year, we brag and we gloat over the fact that we're so proud that we not just met 100% of our maintenance of effort. We've exceeded that. Every single year, we've exceeded that. And I'm proud of that fact that every city manager has done that. Wouldn't it be even greater if we could get that fence and add it to the maintenance of effort to know that we saved a life? So that, I agree 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
No, Counselor Mercer said it. The liability issue is significant. Through you to the city manager, the question of city property, school property, is that, can we resolve that?
Counselor, this is the first time I've ever had this request. It's never been brought up since I've been manager. So we will investigate this absolutely and see what the holdup is. It does strike me as odd. This is one of our, if not our newest school, and that there wasn't a fence or a playground allotment done when we built that school. So it's peculiar, but in the three and a half years I've been sitting here, this has never been brought to my attention. And it sounds like, from what Ms. Kaur said, others have talked about property lines and so forth. So we'll get to the bottom of it and find out what seems to be the problem. And then, you know, as far as cost, we have no estimate at this point because we haven't looked at it.
Right.
So we'll look at it. We'll talk to the school department. We'll just try and get to the bottom of what the problem is here.
Okay, good. Well, this is how we solve the problem, and you're aware of it, and you weren't aware of it. So that's good. Whatever the cost is, we've got to make it happen. And I think the speakers heard from the manager loud and clear that we got message sent, message received, and we'll get right on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also thank the speakers for stepping up and bringing attention to this situation. There is absolutely no doubt that there's nothing more sacred than to have the safety of the children. And again, when we take a look at all the schools, we should probably maybe get a, some type, we should get a report just to make sure all the playgrounds are enclosed. I think would be a good idea because I personally, I didn't know that this was an open area. And as the teacher just mentioned, chasing a five-year-old around, I think we've all done that. It's not easy. And not only chasing one, but you have a number of them going on at the same time. So I will, one of the things that the speaker just brought up, which I think was so important, and I've mentioned it numerous times, probably because of being on the school committee for so many years, and that is, there's really not the school side and the city side. It's one side, and that's the city of Lowell. And I think we all work together to make things better. And this is a perfect example of stepping up and making this area secure. So again, I thank you for addressing this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the subject? Thank you, speakers. Thank you, Counselor Chow. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Back to the agenda. Motion Response D., Street Sweeping. Counselor Chow?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, I made a made the motion, somebody did that a long time ago, but I believe this one was by Counselor Noon, the most recent one.
Okay. Well, just, do you have any questions on it?
I'm going to tell Counselor Noon, since he made the motion, I'm going to let him take the lead.
All right. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Christine Clancy. It's very concise, but a very important report. Appreciate that report. It's troubling that the city of Lowell has only two street sweeper, and one is not operable. Each one of them is almost past its life expectancy. But I do appreciate it, and I know that there's some money in the capital 2022 to buy a new one. It's cost a lot, $240,000. But that said, I know that, you know, with regard to downtown, the city also have, it's also have a downtown vacuum sweeper that operated every Saturday and Sunday and dailies as well. With regard to the schedule, it would be helpful. I mean, you know, I seen a street sweeper went out there in the Highland. You know, if we could put notice, send notice to resident, because they don't know. I mean, in the big street, let's say Westford Street, they don't know the schedule. They're gonna park on that street. And so you're not, the street sweeper won't be able to sweep the street. So maybe having a sign of some sort and say, "Look, this month, this date, to this date, we're gonna come to your downtown," or these Balvoody or Senderville or Upper Highland and so on. I see very detailed schedule, but it's not up there for the resident who live in the main street to know. So that certainly will be helpful, the information, so that street sweeper can do their job in cleaning our street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on street sweeping? Next motion, Shed Park parking lot. Counselor Samaras, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank the city manager for such quick action on this motion. This was in regard to the parking in the, at Shed Park, the upper and lower parking lot. But it was interesting how you described, how it was described, the conditions of these lots are made up of gravel and recycled asphalt milling that were stripped from other roadway projects in the city. And this was done some 20 years ago. But the thing is, what you did point out, that it would cost approximately $1 million to do that with an asphalt covering. Hopefully, that can be done, you know, in the future. But the fact that the DPW will repair the existing potholes, and they talked about using some of the same material that can be recycled into that parking lot. So I think that will help out a great deal. Thank you for, you know, even, you know, giving the pitches and everything that showed the issues. But I know this is an expensive project. Hopefully can be put out as a capital project at some point. But the fact that you can repair it in the same manner, I think will work at this particular point. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Quick question, Madam Managers. Can we ask the commissioner a question on this? Is she online?
I think she is.
Yes, I am.
When you do the re-milling there, do they coat that with oil to like really suck the repurposed milling in so it's all bound together?
Sure.
Like over, when you use the re-milling, right, do they soak that in some sort of oil to really stick and bind everything together?
So when we use the re-millings, we do not add any, we don't have any additives. I would say, especially in the warmer temperatures, I think naturally, some of those oils in the millings do kind of melt, and so that it goes down better in the summer. But we don't add typically. It's really, it just goes down, it's compacted. And then over time, especially in the summer, that really, those oils, oils that exist there, they kind of melt, for lack of a better word, creating a better bond. So you see the best bond in the summer, and that usually holds up at least into the winter. By the end of the winter, you start to see it deteriorate, and that's where we will repair potholes, and then look to see if we have to add additional millings in the spring or upcoming summer.
All right. Can we just, I remember years ago, this is years ago, they used to oil the roads and then coat them with sand. And it was kind of like a, I don't know what you call it. But I was wondering if that's a process we could look at, because the parking lot over at Colley Stadium where we did this, you know, gets loose, and like you said, it gets into Douglas Road, and it gets all over the place. So if there's another process we could look at where we oil it down and sand it, I don't know if they still do that or allow it, but maybe we just take a look at a different approach on that. Thank you.
Sure, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, you know, and I'm glad that we have a plan in the future to take care of this area, because I think it really, it does need, it needs to be done. I'm wondering, is, not to put you on the spot here, but when you say the future capital project, do you anticipate perhaps like in a three-year period or two-year or five-year? Do we have any idea on something like that?
For this particular project, it's difficult to say at this point, as we're looking at so many other capital needs. So together, we'll obviously craft the, you know, capital plan each year. But it is difficult to say. It is, you know, it is expensive, but we're also looking at the Colley Stadium lot. We're looking at a number of things. So, you know, we'll certainly take it under consideration. We list all the capital requests and then try and come up with a figure that the city can afford and talk to the council about it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions on Motion Response F. Counselor Elliott?
Very briefly, thank you. This motion was regarding the sidewalk on Brannham Avenue. I appreciate the recommendation that the sidewalk be continued. It's a short strip, but from essentially Frieda Lane up to Constance. Lot of walkers. There's also a lot of kids that do walk either to or from the vocational school. So I know there's a cost associated with it, but at some point in time, it'd be nice to work that into the capital plan because it's, Brannham Ave is a heavily traveled, sort of dangerous, sort of road, Madam Manager. So thank you for the report. It is recommended, but I know there's between $250,000 and $600,000. So as you just mentioned, a lot of capital needs, and appreciate this being put into the capital plan at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Motion Response G., Hale Street? Counselor Noon, oh, is that Counsel yours? Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Madam Manager and Commissioner Christine Clancy for responding to this request in a very timely manner. Hale Street is the area in front of the Glory Buddhist Temple, and you have in front of the Glory Buddhist Temple, and you have tens of thousands of pedestrian annually that go visit a temple for many different type of events, from, from wake to celebration of life, to holidays, birthday, what have you. And I see that it's on the plan for fiscal year 2022 to be improved and repaved. So I want to thank the Madam Manager and her office very much for putting this as a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that one? Thank you for taking care of that. There was a big hole over there. Councilor Drinkwater, any questions on Douglas Road sidewalks response?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe projects that we're hopeful will be included in a future capital budget is emerging as a theme tonight, and I think a theme that will continue throughout these motion responses. But appreciate the report. I think, you know, sidewalks along this heavily trafficked and heavily walked road speak for themselves, and due to the cost, hopefully, it can be done in a future year. I did want to propose this, because I know we had discussed the Douglas Road wet weather storage project, and the rehabilitation of a portion of the Colley Stadium parking lot to go in conjunction with that, when there was some underground work being done. I wasn't really sure the extent of, you know, the street work and how far it extends. So wanted to at least, you know, explore that possibility. One question, just on, on the response, it does refer to, as part of the Colley Stadium parking lot project, that there will be a sidewalk installation as part of that. A question through you, Mr. Mayor, is that sidewalk proposed to be just along the length of the Colley Stadium parking lot with sort of openings for entrances? Or is it, does that extend any further beyond the parking lot? Just wanted to clarify.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, I think if the Commissioner's on, I thought it was on one side. But Commissioner Clancy, if you can answer that?
Sure. The sidewalks, I mean, it still is yet to be designed. I think the intent was really to provide sidewalks on the facility, so from the parking lot to the, to the stadium. But I think we, you know, we still are in early phases of design, so I think we could look at it maybe just in the frontage of Colley Stadium as well. But it was originally meant for ADA accessibility, so when people are using the stadium, because right now there's, there are some limited accessibility getting into the stadium.
Thank you. And again, certainly, I think there's a case to be made to extend them as a safety enhancement beyond that. But I think that would be a great start, to at least have them along the length of the parking lot. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Next response, Councilor Drinkwater, motion response A, Carney Field seating. Was that yours?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very quickly on this one. Thank you very much for the response. And we didn't get a chance to speak on these motions at the last meeting, because we were up against the 10:00 PM deadline. But I filed this motion, because the Roberto Clemente League uses Carney Field over at North Comm in, for a lot of the games for the older players. And it was pointed out to me that there actually were no bleachers at the field. So, you know, a number of people standing to watch a game, or had to bring their own seating. So in the response, it mentions there was a surplus set of bleachers that could be restored, and will be put out at the field for the beginning of next season. So great result there, and that'll be an important enhancement for those attending games over at Carney Field. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Motion response J, fire station infrastructure. Any questions on that? Councilor Nguyen or Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is quite an extensive, and I think important, report regarding the conditions of our firehouses throughout the city. When you look at what's mentioned here in the report as not, not a wish list of projects, but a list of necessary repairs, you know, the must-do sort of things, you know, it adds up, as mentioned in here, to $9.36 million. This is stuff that we, we really need to do. And, you know, a list that I'm sure will only increase in cost over time. So, you know, the question becomes, you know, how do we, how do we fund these, these projects? Certainly, as mentioned in the report, it extends beyond the typical capital budget allocations for the department. But, but, you know, again, necessary repairs for the health and safety of our firefighters who work out of these firehouses. So I did, the report does mention that there is around a little over $500,000 in capital funds that have already been allocated to certain projects. And there is a top priority list in the report, which I think is important, that could spend that over half million dollars that's already been, been allocated. So I did want to ask just about the timeline for doing the, you know, procurements and getting that money out the door to tackle that, that top list of projects. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, or Commissioner Clancy, or Chief Sharon, I don't know, whoever would be available to answer, is there a plan to start to tackle that, that top list of priority projects and get that capital allocation spent?
Yeah.
Madam Manager?
So I believe the Commissioner's on, you know, in speaking with the Commissioner and the chief, there is certainly a list of priorities, and that includes, you know, removing asbestos and those kinds of immediate needs. If Commissioner Clancy can address it in further detail, as far as what the
Sure.
short-term, near-term plan is?
Sure. So this list of the $535,000 in priorities, and Chief Sharon, you can also add to this, it's something that we're working on diligently. And so right now, the first project being the water heaters. We're working on that right now, going through procurement. And then we will, we've already started some structural assessments as well. So we are, our goal is to try to get through as many of these as possible, and, you know, this fall into the winter and then spring, it's just, is, you know, how quickly can we issue these RFPs or, and/or IFBs? That, so we don't have a definitive timeline, but it's something that, that we're, that both the DPW and the Fire Department are meeting frequently to make sure that we're making progress in all these items.
Thank you. It's great to hear that at least some of the projects have already started the process. I think that's, that's important. And there, you know, you look at it, though, very important projects, you know, a drop in the bucket in terms of the, you know, the overall list that's needed. In terms of future or other funding sources that might be utilized to be able to tackle the rest of this list, I just, did just want to kind of briefly ask about a couple of those. I know grants, outside grants were mentioned in the report. I know in the last budget, we did approve the position of a grant, right, and the Fire Department wanted to ask about if there's been any progress on, on that position, so we can potentially capture, capture some of that outside funding. And then the other possible funding source that was mentioned, and I guess I was, I viewed this, this with some cautious optimism, was the ARPA. I wasn't sure whether, you know, the potential usage of that fund would be allowed for this type of infrastructure. I'm certainly, you know, hopeful, as a lot of these projects relate to, to health and safety of the firefighters who work in there. So did just want to kind of ask for, you know, some elaboration on whether some of the city's allocation of ARPA funds may be able to utilize for, for some of these capital projects.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And this is something that we have been looking at and discussing with the Commissioner and with the chief. I'll ask CFO Connor Baldwin to address it in further detail as far as ARPA. It's very specific, but we are exploring all possibilities. It certainly wouldn't be the list of items you see before you, but there may be carve-outs of some of these. So if you can address that, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Madam Manager. And Councilor Drinkwater, as we discussed previously at the subcommittee level in the facility subcommittee, the availability of the American Rescue Plac, American Rescue Plan Act funds is a possibility in this incident, to the extent that the repairs would be linked directly to health and safety. So as some of these repairs that were mentioned by the Commissioner could be used for ventilation in the firehouses, or other health and safety measures, those would be eligible. However, infrastructure on its face, other than water and sewer, is not generally eligible. So there could be components of projects that we could use ARPA money to fund. And then, as you mentioned, there may be other grant opportunities through the state or federal government that the soon-to-be hired grant writer could identify and use, as well as existing capital funds in future years, to address some of these outstanding issues.
Madam Manager?
I think the other point is, and as you've mentioned, Counselor, these are repairs. This is not renovation or upgrading these firehouses. And so the price tag we're looking at are in the ballpark of $10 million. That is just fixing what needs to be fixed. These firehouses are quite old and have, have a lot of needs. But if we were talking about upgrading or renovating, it's, it's a whole different stratosphere of needs. And so, you know, we're going to continue to work with, with the chief, with the Commissioner, and others to determine on a go-forward. You know, I know the city has looked at it before, but what is the best way of approaching public safety, you know, providing the fire protection services and so forth, when our physical plants are woefully outdated? So, so there's that. But that's not to say we wouldn't go forward with these very, very necessary repairs.
Thank you. And I recognize we have to get creative and figure out how, how we will fund these, because again, it goes well beyond, you know, the typical appropriations that are made in a given year. And I did want to just mention, relative to that, and this will probably come up, Counselor Elliott, I'm sure will mention it in his report on the Cannabis Subcommittee meeting that occurred last night. But it was mentioned that within the marijuana excise tax revenue that the city has collected, a quarter of that is put into a special purpose fund for the repair of municipal facilities. So I know the Subcommittee asked for a report and plan on some of, how, how some of those unallocated funds could, could be spent. This is certainly a possible use that, that sticks out. I don't want to start speaking for these funds. But did just want to mention that, you know, pool of money that the council a couple of years ago was wise enough to set aside for the purpose of municipal repair. So I think it's probably just a matter of finding any possible source and, you know, allocating it. So anyway, but the report was very comprehensive. Thank the authors for that. And also just want to mention, I'm hoping this can be referred to the Municipal Facility Subcommittee, just to further meet on this topic. So I'll make that in the form of a motion to refer it to the Subcommittee.
Second it. Okay. Motion by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Nguyen. Any further discussion? Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We go through this every few months, you know, with the firehouses. Hopefully, the chief is still on the line. Hopefully, he can speak to us as well. You know, I visited the firehouses this past weekend, each and every one of them. My guess is over half of them would probably be shut down and condemned with some of the conditions that they're in. I think that we have to show the same focus to the firehouses in the city as we have with the schools in the city as well, understanding that, you know, there was the MSBA that helped us out financially. But there really is only six actual, you know, fire stations. I know when you add the engines and the rescues, but, you know, they really are in bad, bad shape. And you have the men and women that serve the city that live there, right, on 24-hour shifts. So I appreciate the report and some of the comments that are made. But, you know, what is really being done, and to this date, not much. I would expect, hopefully, we get a comment from the, from the fire chief this evening, to see his thoughts on it. But they are his men and women that are in these buildings on a daily basis. And again, they live there. We talk about poor ventilation, no hot water, you know, some of them, you know, one of the stations, you know, the flooring has gone on one of them, right? You know, windows don't work. And I remember the outcry in the schools about windows not being, of not, you know, being functional. Again, you know, these are men and women that protect us, that their double-one job, you know, is running off fires and responding to medical emergencies and crashes and so forth. But, you know, we really need to prioritize this as hard and as fast as we did with the schools. And until we show that priority, you know, we'll probably be here again in another six months, or another motion is filed, or another year, another report is done. I would just hope that with the availability of ARPA money coming in, that we really put this at the top of the list. And I would like to hear from the chief as well, if he's online.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yeah, I believe the chief is online.
Yes, I'm, I am here. Yes, thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, I guess, Steve, my main question to you is, you know, you lead these men and women. You know, you are, you know, at the top of the department. And, you know, you worked it. You were in, you know, these fire stations. I'm sure when you were there as a firefighter, there hasn't been much of an improvement in the facilities. So your opinion of what you see, your men and women working in every day, and we haven't even addressed some of the fire trucks that, you know, have broken down recently. But as far as the, the working quarters of Lowell Fire Department, your opinion, please?
Yes, thank you, Counselor, for giving me an opportunity to speak. In relation to the Fire Department's infrastructure here in the city of Lowell, it would be characterized across the board as poor. Some of the stations are critical. My example would be for the council, the 146-year-old station at Gorm Street, which houses Engine One and Car Three. There's extensive problems located in the basement, questions of asbestos lagging, deteriorated situations down there, a deteriorated apparatus floor. Now, this is a building that served its city for 150 years. I'd like to take the opportunity also to say that the Fire Department infrastructure is a little bit different than the rest of the infrastructure of the city, in that it has served for such a long period of time, and it is essentially a home. It is a home for firefighters. They have to live there, sleep there, they work there, they do maintenance, they shower, they cook meals, they rest, and they respond for it. These stations definitely have gone a long time without very significant maintenance. The station in question that I'm using as an example, the Gorm Street Firehouse, has a plaque that is on it. With the exception of the replacement of the roof and the replacement of the boiler, it hasn't seen any significant work since the plaque from the WPA, authorized under Franklin Delano Roosevelt, frankly. The conditions in many of the firehouses have reached a point where there's questions of structural integrity, there's questions of a health hazard. We've identified the $530,000 to the most critical of projects. But again, those are the most critical things. The list is very long when it comes to those things that are serious. When the manager interviewed me as the chief of the Fire Department, and I'm approaching my one-year mark, she asked me what was my priority. The absolute priority are the conditions of the firehouse. Many of the men have been let go for a long period of time. And many of them need improvements, things that we would consider normal in a regular household. With our people living and responding 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with the expectation that they're going to serve the public, I think they at least deserve the opportunity to have a fully functioning, healthy fire station in order for them to serve the city as it requires. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You know, Madam Manager, I'm sure you have probably gotten a billion dollars' worth of requests concerning this money that is coming into the city, right? I think if we can at least take one of the major problems that's in our city, the firehouses, the fire stations, and totally remedy that problem with, with this money, and understanding the CFO's comments earlier on in this discussion, I think it's something that has to be done. I'm hoping that we can get a further report from the chief and from Commissioner Clancy of, again, of the estimates. And not only that, the times in which these are going to be to be fixed. Your administration does outstanding work with the school buildings in the city, and I'm sure once the focus is put on our firestations, they will reap the same benefit. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott, do you have your hand up?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. This is a good motion by Counselor Noon and Counselor Drinkwater, and the pictures that are provided in the report say it all. I do know the prior counsel, Madam Manager, there was a work group that was set up under the prior chief, Chief Winward, and at that work group, Congresswoman Trehan was, Emily Byrne was there, and as well as the grant writer, Marion Bellotta, from the police station, from the police department, but the point is to identify funds. And yes, we need to, there are some immediate needs, and I completely support that, but the overall picture with the laundry list, and Congresswoman Trehan was actually optimistic that we identify projects and/or programs, whether it's training, equipment, et cetera, and, you know, find funding, but at the very least, I think the chief sort of describes a compelling argument, that people live there, they sleep there, they cook there, and we have to be cognizant of that. So, moving forward, it's a good report, but the pictures say a thousand words, and we can't have our firefighters in these conditions. And I know we're aware of it, but we're taking action through our capital plan, our funding, but it's an enormous undertaking, and that doesn't mean that it's not achievable, but we need to identify these resources. So, I appreciate the report and the input from the chief, because we have to hear it from him, because he's hearing it, and we all see it, without a doubt, and it's gone on too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Should I, Madam Manager?
Just a quick follow-up. As I mentioned, we will be drilling down into the ARPA funding to see what is eligible and what can be utilized, and we have, you know, worked with Congresswoman Trehan's office. There is an infrastructure bill pending down in Congress, you know, we'll see how that comes out, but we're very hopeful that, you know, something like a big infrastructure bill could also be a potential source of other resources for municipalities, especially for things like this. So, we're going to continue to do that, as well as just address what has to be addressed.
Counselor Noon, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report, very detailed, very in-depth, and, well, the picture doesn't look that great at all, I'm telling you, these, when you look at the report, indicated that 100, most of this firehouse is 106 years old. The oldest is 146. They do seriously need attention, as the chief indicated, that this is a home to all of firefighters in the city of Lowell, and I know that, you know, my colleague spoke of, identified possible funding sources, as you indicated just a few minutes ago, the ARPA funding, the American Rescue Act Fund, and so also the marijuana excise revenue, the 25% savvy vote a few years ago. So, so, we do have a grant writer, and with all these possible identified funding sources, we need to also have a list of, prioritize the list of needed repair, and need to take care of this, all this firehouse before, you know, something happened, you know, to our firefighters. That's where they live and work. They take care of us, our resident, and we should take care of them and do our utmost. So, if we could, maybe, I would say, if we already have a working group, reconvene that working group with the Congresswoman and state delegation and/or whoever else that you think should be a part of this, put together a list, prioritize what needs to be done, and where the resources, where the funding come from, and provide us a list of, you know, timeline, so that, you know, people can really measure to, you know, when is this one's going to get done, and where the funding sources come from. I thank you, Madam Manager, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras, you had your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, there's nothing that any city council has stated that you don't already know or have been working with, there's no question about that. The issue here really is that the conditions that we're asking firepeople, and actually our police department also, are conditions where, I think if we went into the private setting, we'd take actions against those companies. I think our people have been very good in these situations, but as the chief stated, the firehouses are like a home, and it's not a healthy, it's not a healthy situation. When you go in the police department, it's amazing the work that both groups can do, especially based on the conditions of their offices and what have you, what they don't have to work with. And today, there have been so many changes that have been made for police departments and fire departments. We have, I think we've gone beyond looking into repairing, and maybe as Counselor Noon was alluding to, maybe there has to be a commission that you have to form that just looks into, okay, what, just, it's actually like the high school, you know, the steps that we took. We know we needed to build a new high school, we know we needed, high school could no longer exist the way it has been, and it's most assuredly the same way, much more, also with the fire department, police department, but perhaps, you know, some type of commission that would include the federal delegation, the state delegation, what have you, and what do we as the city do to build new firestations, new police stations, and repair as best we can, you know, some of the substations? But I think that's an action that has to be taken, because the thing is, you can't do it alone, there's no question. I know as the manager, we've talked about this, everybody's, I know everybody's talked to you about this, and you want to do this, but you need the tools and you need the monies to do it. So, how can we as a council help you do what you already want to do, or what your chief wants to, chief of police and the chief of the fire department want to do? So, thank you. Thank you for your actions in the past.
Thank you. Anyone else on this response? Thank you. Motion Response K. Andover Street? Just quickly, thank you, Madam Manager, for looking into this, and a lot of the residents have asked about this, the street lanes are like narrow, 11 feet wide, so I think the turning arrows in the middle of the road, it's not a solve-all, but it's going to help slow down, I think, some of the traffic, so thank you for making this a priority. Thank you. Motion Response L., any questions on that? Counselor Mercy of polling locations?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you as well to the city manager for the great job and the response here, and you must understand our concern where we were concerned about the river and the bridge, and to try to make it fair for one side of the river to the other side, and when the election commission chose Scenario A in District Four, with the Central Street Bridge being out of order and only being one way and causing a traffic jam in that area for this important election, we were very concerned as to what we were going to do, and how was this decision brought forward? But then, when we figured it all out through the wisdom of the city and the election commission, they said that this is what is happening. The Green Elge Elementary School is designated as an early in-person voting location for three evenings for the September 21st preliminary election, and two evenings for the November 2nd final election, so, which is the largest number of in-person early voting days at one site, with the exception of the Lowell Senior Center. So, knowing that, I really try to help people, and I think everybody's concerned about it, but they have many chances. Now, they have, it, there's both an evening and a weekend day, and it's going to accommodate voters with different working schedules, so it's not like the election commission office made a decision, and the heck with everybody else, but that's not what I read in this, and I do see it firsthand, where the Green Elge is a targeted school to have many opportunities. So, I think that's the fairest that we could do under the circumstances. So, thank you very much, Madam Manager, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Counselor Elliott, any questions on motion response and bus service to polling locations?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, the motion was to have request the LRTA, Lowell Regional Transit Authority, provide free bus service to polling locations on election day. The response, the response from the LRTA was that, under the state law, they can't do that. However, there is a bill pending in the Senate, but there's been no action. Nevertheless, the city does utilize the Senior Center van, and drivers from DPW provide free transportation for voters who wish to get transported to and from the polling location, so, and the city's going to offer that this year for the preliminary and the general municipal election. So, the service is available from mid-morning through the afternoon. Any resident that would like to get a ride can contact the election office, and the number is actually here, 978-674-4046, but that's the election office at City Hall, if I read that number too quick. So, while the LRTA cannot provide free service, the city has that service available using the Senior Center van. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Informational service, information reports, Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did put in a packet, an update on voter information and outreach, and we included a informational document that was mailed to every registered voter, that sets forth what the new election system is, what the new districts are, where people can find out more information regarding these particular districts, which districts have a preliminary election, where the polling locations are, the whole process of the municipal ballot, particularly because it's going to look different than prior elections, where each voter can select up to three at-large city council candidates and one district city council candidate on their ballot, and up to two at-large school committee candidates and one district school committee candidate. We also included in this the voting by mail opportunity, and this is allowed now because there was special legislation. So, vote by mail applications can be either downloaded online, lolma.gov/votbymail, or can be requested by calling the elections office at 978-674-4046. The, also, as has been mentioned here tonight, there is in-person early voting that is ongoing and will continue until Friday of this week. Each of the remaining days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there is voting in person at the Senior Center from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There's also evenings this week, on Wednesday, at the CBA, the Coalition for a Better Acre, at 517 Moody Street, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The CMAA on Thursday evening at 465 School Street, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and also at the CMAA on Friday night, 465 School Street, 5:00 to 8:00. And then lastly, we do have the ballot boxes outside of City Hall, where if people have filled in, want to drop off their ballot, as opposed to mailing it in the U.S. mail, and they come after hours, when they don't come in or at any time, they can leave it in one of the very clearly marked ballot boxes for Lowell elections, both on the Plaza side of the JFK Plaza and on Merrimack Street. So, everybody did get this, as well as a card telling them what their new polling location is. I just wanted to give the council the update as to what we have done to mail something to every registered voter.
Okay. Should we recess for a minute, councilors? We all set? Thank you, Madam Manager. Are we going to put out the sandwich boards, do you think?
Yes, we will be, we did discuss that, and we'll put them out in the districts that do have elections coming up. I will get back to you as far as what days those will go out, but they will be strategically placed in the four districts that have a preliminary election.
Okay. Need a motion to accept and place on file all the motion responses by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Samaras. 5.3 Communications, reappointment of Greg Stedwell to Sustainability Council, need a motion to adopt. Any questions? Motion by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Rock. Any questions? Roll call? Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this, is this man a relatively new person to be on the Sustainability Commission, or is he getting reappointed?
I'm sorry, let me get, this is a reappointment.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call?
Counselor Elliott? Yes. Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chau?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
That's nine years.
5.4 Communications, city manager requests out-of-state travel for two LPD, motion to adopt. Any questions? Counselor Noon? Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Roll call?
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chau?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Nine years.
Mr. Mayor?
Should I, Matt? Should I, Counselor Mercy?
If we could vote to bundle on the votes, 6-1 to 6-8, and when I say that, I don't mean that people on the council don't have a right to speak on any of those involved with the six, between 6-1 and 6-8, so I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Motion by Counselor Mercy, seconded by Counselor Noon to bundles, votes 6-1 through 6-8. All in favor? Say aye.
No, I, no, I'm in favor, I just, there's one important one that I just wanted to make note of, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, you want to talk about it now?
Yeah, just 6-1.
Yeah.
I think this is, this is an exemption, which I think is significant, Madam Manager. This could result in potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue, so I appreciate the fact that we are going down this, going down this track, if you will, or to hire this individual who works for the department revenue, but just for the viewers at home, this is to do a, it's a very technical assessment of the hydroelectric dam, and the prior owner would take us to court, and we wouldn't get, we wouldn't fully assess that. Is that the correct way to assess it, to, to, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I, I think the determination is made that we need someone with Mr. Sansucci's expertise in order to properly assess- expertise in order to properly assess this from the, from the start. And that's why we're recommending this. And, and Mr. Sansucci, who does work for the Department of Revenue, has also done this for other communities, so it is his area of expertise.
Okay. That's why, I just want to make note, when we go looking for revenue, we have that hydro plant, and it's, I understand, they make millions of dollars, however, the city needs to properly assess it, and it's very, very complicated, and it's good to have this individual that we're going to hire in the assessors office. I know Sula May, for years and years, advocated for this, so it could potentially result in lots of revenue for the city, so. Thank you. And I don't know if there are any other questions from other members, but I just wanted, Mr. Mayor, if we could get a, there are two contracts that the manager has settled with unions. If we could just get a quick, quick description of those terms. I think it's 6-2 and 6?
6-5 and?
6-5.
6-4.
Excuse me. 6-4 and 6-5.
Wait a minute.
And then I, I don't have any other questions.
6-5 and 6-6, sorry.
Madam Manager, just want to briefly talk on those?
Sure. These are two collective bargaining agreements that we are bringing forward and recommending a vote on tonight. The first is with the, the engineers for the city of Lowell. This is a three-year contract. The essential points of this contract are that there is a, in year one, there's a 2% salary increase retroactive to June, July 1st of 2021. Year two is a 2%, but it's 1% on the first day of July 1, 2022, and 1% on the first day of January 2023. The third year provides, there shall be a 1% increase on the first day of July 1, 2023, and a 1% increase effective January 1, 2024. The, also, the collective bargaining agreement also agrees to, the city will roll into each member's base pay $500, which, and remove the $200 stipend previously for boots and clothing. We're including the holiday of Juneteenth, which was new this year as part of a legal We also add language around that, if there are other holidays that are declared by the state's general court, those would be included. Significantly, we are increasing the hours of the city engineers from 35 to 40, which will also increase their salary, can measure it with the increased working hours. This goes into effect September 20th, 2021. We also made changes with regard to their lunch period or meal period in light of the increased hours. And I think those are the highlights of the engineer's contract. We also have a contract that we're presenting for Collective Bargaining Unit 2P, that also has similar COLA provisions for years 1, 2, and 3. Also provides for the Juneteenth holiday as being part of a legal paid holiday. The wage adjustment for Unit 2P is as follows. Engineers will receive $3,500 base pay increase on July 1, 2021. This will be retroactive to July 1, 2021. They will receive $3,500 base pay increase July 1, 2022, and $3,000 base pay increase on July 1, 2023. We're increasing stipends from 600 to 1,000. We're making some provisions for the assistant chemist, and those are pretty much the essential highlights of Unit 2P settlement. So, those are the two contracts this week that we're bringing forward for requesting the council's approval.
Okay, good. Those hit the highlights, Madam Manager. And I do know that funding has been set aside. There is a stabilization fund to, to support this, so it's, it just, I think that's important to note. So, it's essentially 2-2, and 2-awhile. I understand one is, 1% on one, one part of the year, and then 1% of the other. So, these are two of, how many more? Are these the first two? Or we've?
Second and third.
Second and third. Okay.
The traffic engineers were brought in two weeks ago.
Right. Okay.
And we're actively negotiating with all the others.
Okay. Thank you for the information. I appreciate that. We're moving forward to settle collective bargaining agreements. Funding has been set aside, so there's no additional levy, and I, I think that's important as we move forward, to, to try to keep our employees, too. So, there are incentives, stipends, increased hours, so it seems like a fair, a fair collective bargaining agreement, and I'm going to support them.
All set?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions on the votes? Okay. So, votes 6-1 through 6-8. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. 6-1, approve exemption of George E. Sansucci from MLG, Chapter 280, 268A, Section 20. Vote 6-2, vote authorize the city manager to accept the gift of $7,500 from DCU to the LDF, LFD, excuse me. Vote 6-3, authorize city manager to accept and expend $15,000. F-22 First Responder Knox-Lawn Grant to the LPD. 6-4, vote authorize city manager to apply and accept and expend $35,439 JAG F-21, 2021 grant to the LPD. Vote authorize city manager execute MOU with Lowell Organize, Organization of City Engineers. 6-6, vote authorize city manager to execute MOU with Merrimack Valley Employees Association Unit, IAP. And 6-7, vote authorize city manager execute temporary access agreement with Boot Hydro Power LLC. And vote 6-8, transfer $4,100 to the Cemetery Division of the DPW. Motion by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Samaras. Roll call?
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
7 Orders, City Manager. 7-1, 60-day order by trial.
23rd? Yes. Send me a text.
60-day trial, waive the full reading, second reading by title. City Lowell in City Council Order pursuant to Chapter 266 Code of Ordinances, City Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning Section 266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Roll call?
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Constable Bonds, 8-1, Communications, City Manager requests approval of Constable Bond for Curtis Freeman. Any questions? Motion to adopt by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Roll call?
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Reports, Subcommittee Reports, 9-1, zoning, September 7, 2021. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief on these next number of reports. The first was a zoning Subcommittee that was called in reference to a flood overlay district zone change, ordinance change, excuse me. At the meeting, this was last Tuesday, in attendance were myself, Council Chow, Council Noon, Eric Slagle from Inspection Services was, was also present. So, I did mention that the purpose, this was to adopt zoning amendments relative to updating the floodplain overlay district. There are a number of very technical amendments that need to be adopted to be in compliance with the state regulations, and the purpose of this is to ensure that we are in compliance to be with the National Flood Insurance Program. Mrs. Slagle noted the ordinance, as I mentioned, is technical, and outlining the amendment processes, it needs to be completed by the end of the year. So, what does this mean, you know, in, in short term, is we need to adopt ordinances that are compliant, that they match the maps that have been adopted by FEMA, that have been redrawn, so that the boundaries are, incorporate those homes that are eligible and that need to be subsidized by the National Flood Insurance Program. So, the recommendation is to proceed with, with the ordinance amendments as presented by the administration, by Mrs. Slagle. Again, it doesn't have to be done by the end of the calendar year, but we don't want to wait. We want to make sure that this is in place, or it knows the way that we've had some, the storms lately, we just want to make sure that every homeowner is protected, and if they want and need, are eligible for flood insurance, that it's going to be backed by the federal government, and that's what this is all about, it's being, making sure this insurance is being subsidized and that we are in compliance. So, that's, the, the recommendation is, is to adopt, or to proceed to a public hearing for the ordinance, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to accept the report by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercia. Zoning Cannabis Control Subcommittee, September 13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cannabis Control Subcommittee had recessed previously, and we held another meeting last night. We also recessed this meeting. It was just to get an update on where we are with both our host community agreements, cultivation, delivery, and, and retail. Present were myself, Council Drinkwater, Council Noon, Connor Baldwin, the Chief, Chief Financial Officer, Allison Chambers, and Eric Slagle. So, the, the meeting was twofold. One was to get an update where we are. There's a report, we requested a report be provided to all members of the City Council on the status of the host community agreements, and they're listed on our desk this evening for all the members. There are five host community agreements. There's still only one in operation, however, Mayflower Medicinals. They have special, a special permit from the planning board and state license, they're currently building out. That's on 470 Chelmsford Street. I thought Pure Industries was also close. They have a special permit from the planning board, state license, and they're currently in the build-out. I think they're close, as their expected opening is this coming November. The other three are also in the process. There are 12 cultivation facilities in the city. Some are in the, some are operating, some are in the process of getting licensed through the state, and some are, one has been, one of, one has been appealed, oh, excuse me, one of the retail businesses has been appealed on Westford Street. So, that's sort of the status on the, the number of retail establishments, as well as cultivation. Delivery, the Subcommittee met previously, and there had been a report provided to the council on delivery in the city. The administration is still in the process of developing regulations before any, any delivery establishments are approved. The second part is, is good news, I suppose, relative to revenue that the city has received as, from marijuana excise and host community revenues. There's, and I'll be brief. The bottom line is, to date, we received $649,560 in marijuana excise receipts, meaning the, this is, these are, this is revenue from the sales. The second part is host community revenue that, from the gross receipts of these retail establishments and cultivation establishments, 3% goes back to the city as well. So, in total, 6% goes back to the city. That total is 1.2 million. So, to date, we're looking at, you know, those, those two combined totals, almost $2 million of revenue come into the city over the last, one goes back to 2016, but in large part for the last three fiscal years. Finally, as Council Drinkwater mentioned earlier, this is a motion by Council Noon a couple of years ago, to establish a municipal stability, facility stabilization fund. There's currently $217,253 in that fund. There's been no money spent from it since FY19. And as mentioned earlier by Council Drinkwater, this fund was set up specifically to dedicate 25% of the revenue that we receive from the sale of marijuana retail shops in the city go to, to municipal improvements. And I think this is a fine use, as we just went through, as well as, and there's a motion coming. I think it makes sense that we start dedicating this money, and tonight was a good example of firehouses. Council Noon, I hope he speaks on it, because he spoke on that at the, at the Subcommittee, as well as Council Drinkwater, dedicating, you know, that money, or, or having the administration come up with a plan. So, I'll wrap it up here. The motion, because the question was, we have this money coming in, other establishments will be opening up, other businesses will be opening up. Is there a plan? Because we know there, we know the needs. And the motion was, and Mr. Baldwin did indicate, we're kind of first out of the gate with this. I know there are other establishments, but as far as setting up a municipal fund and having revenue in there, you know, how, how do we go about it? And he suggested, and the motion is to request a report from the, from the CFO, to request that we identify a pay-as-you-go program where a certain amount of money is designated specifically towards capital plan and infrastructure projects, and that money goes right to the debt service. So, that is a motion, Mr., Mr. Mayor, to be brought forward as a recommendation, to request that report. So, whether it's a voice call or a roll call, it makes sense to, to request that report be provided to the entire City Council. That's a report from the Cannabis Control Fin, Cannabis Control Subcommittee, and, yeah, that's it. So, need to vote on that motion.
Any questions? Need a motion to adopt the report and the motion, as is Council Mercia, seconded by Council Elliot. Roll call?
Yep. That, that's reported. It was, it was a good, it was a good meeting, I have to say, Mr., Mr. Mayor, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then the Finance Subcommittee, September 13.
Again, last night, following the Cannabis Control Subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee met relative to motions referred by Council Samaras, myself, Council Noon, and maybe other members, I can't recall, regarding the, the library and meetings with the Board of Trustees. And so, the meeting was last night, the Board of Trustees, all in attendance. Let me get my notes. Number of members of the Subcommittee were there, Council Drinkwater, the Finance Subcommittee, myself, Council Noon, and Council Conway. So, again, the Board of Trustees, by the way, they will be at the next meeting, and they're going to provide a presentation on exactly what the library has done, what it's doing. Last night specifically was on finances. They presented a report that shows that there's a $62,245 gap between our FY22 funding, and we need to close that gap. Motion was made by, by Council Noon, seconded by myself, to bring forward, to request the City Manager bring forward a transfer for that particular amount, and identify that money moving forward to close that gap. Why? What's the purpose? And that is a gap that needs to be closed in order for the city to maintain its certification through the State Board of Libraries. So, we felt it's important to do that for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we want to be certified. We don't want to request a waiver. The only time we've requested, requested a waiver was a number of years ago, following the 2008 recession, and then, and, which was 10, 11, and 12, I believe. However, this last fiscal year, we also requested a waiver. We want to be certified. We want library patrons in Lowell to be able to go to other communities to access books or ebooks or other services. We also want to be able to have that automation. We also want to be able to have that automation and the cataloging with access to catalogs in other communities. So that was the motion. If you bear with me, there were actually three motions that came from that from that meeting. The first was to trans administration before bring forward a transfer, identify funding for $65,245. The second is to memorial memorialize the MAR, which is the municipal. Connor, can I go to you? The the MAR, the municipal assessment requirement, is that right? Mandatory. Mandatory appropriation requirement, which is the minimum that we have to meet. And then the third is to bring forward a five-year report, a five-year plan for the library to increase the the spending for the library so we're a little bit closer to other communities. Lowell is pretty close to the bottom. And part of that five-year plan is to introduce a mobile library to go to the various neighborhoods. So that's a report of progress with those motions to be adopted, particularly the the initial one for the transfer. Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the Subcommittee Report? Need a motion to adopt as a report of progress and adopt the following motions? By Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All those in favor, say aye. And then last one, technology and utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Technology and Utilities Subcommittee met tonight in response, a motion respond to respond to Councilor Drinkwater's requesting City Manager to provide updated regarding city aggregate energy agreement. So tonight, we have Councilor Samaras and Councilor Drinkwater, the Subcommittee Members, also joined by Councilor Mercy and Councilor Elliot. We also have the representative from the broker, the Colonial Power Group, as well as our City of Lowell Energy Managers, Katrin Moos, and some speakers was in attendance as well. So the Community Aggregation CCA, this was established in 2014, which allowed the city to produce procure a competitive electric supply on behalf of our participate participating customer. Back in 2019, this council, the council, not this council, and some of us was here, most of us is here, unanimously unanimously vote to increase the renewable content to 45% plus the state 18% with the Class 1 renewable energy content, which is very fortunate with the low cost in energy as well as more renewable content for the city. We are first in the Commonwealth in this in the gateway cities as well. So the in response to Councilor Drinkwater's motions, the our energy managers put together a report for us. And the report indicated, given the the natural gas prices has increased, so does the cost of electricity. The grid that was provided to us has indicated that if we continue to stay with what we have, which is 45% renewable content, will cost our taxpayer, I mean, our customer, not taxpayer, a customer, 85% $85 per year more. With that said, the speakers, we have a number of speakers spoke and they recommend that the city need to maintain the progress that we make and which I concur. And most of my member committee member also concur. That said, we also recognize that there may be those who cannot afford the $85 per year increase so that we can keep the renewable content that we enjoy, which is 45% on top of the state 18% and being a leader in the Commonwealth. Motion was made by Council Drinkwater and seconded by Council Samaras to ask our energy manager, Katrin Moos, to go look for, you know, way to mitigating the extra costs, either through grant, state, you know, service and or program. That said, so the meeting recessed, waiting for a report from energy managers. Second, a meeting, subsequent meeting has been scheduled, actually, for the September 23rd at 5:30. After that meeting, we will, you know, make recommendations to this full council at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. A motion to adopt as a report of progress by Council Rook, seconded by Council Samaras. Petitions, we have one claim, property damage. Need motion to refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Chow, seconded by Council Elliot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I I wanted you to do that one first. So I would make a request that we bundle from 10-2 to 10-12. These are utility requests for installation of small cell facility. Most of them are two, I think, at the end, the National Grid, but they're all within the same line. It would be kind of redundant and repetitive. If there's no objection, I'd like to bundle 10-2 to 10-12.
Right. Yeah, motion to bundle items 10-2 to 10-12.
Second.
So motion by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Noon. Okay, so 10-2, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing utility pole number 10 at 122 Chapel Street. 10-3, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing pole number four at 57 Court Street. Cell O. Partnership, DBA Verizon, request installation of small cell facility on existing pole number 65 at 1 Huntune Ave. 10-5, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing pole number 92 at 135 Lawrence Street. 10-6, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing utility pole at 119 Harley Road Ave. 10-7, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing utility pole number seven at Wamisett Street. 10-8, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing pole number seven at Whitman Street. Cell Co. 10-9, Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, request installation of small cell facility on existing pole 72 Main Street. 10-10, National Grid, request installation of 12-inch coated steel gas main along Marshall Avenue, West Forest Street, and Chelmsford Street. 10-11, National Grid, request installation of 6-inch plastic gas main 310 feet along 4 to 25 Astor Street. And 10-12, National Grid, request replacing cast iron gas pipe with plastic along Janesta Avenue. So just need a my motion to refer to public hearing on September 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All those in favor? Now we're into the motions. First motion tonight by Council Mercy, a request City Manager have proper department remove the tow area no parking sign and replace it with church-only parking sign at 211 Fletcher Street and refer to Law Department to prepare a 60-day trial order. Motion seconded by Council Noon, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion does speak for itself. It's very important for the people at 211 Fletcher Street in the Acre. They have a church there. They have a few, quite a few people. There is a sign in front of the church saying tow area no parking. They would just like to have that removed and replaced with a church parking only sign. I don't think that's such a bad request. So I'm asking to refer that this motion to the Law Department to prepare a 60-day trial if my colleagues support this. Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Did you have a question?
No.
11-2, Council Mercy, a request City Manager explore ways and means to purchase for the use by the Lowell Police Department a first respond from the first responder money, a four-door ATV that is allowed to idle and maneuver into small places in rough terrain. Seconded by Council Rook, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That motion as well speaks for itself. But I'd just like to reiterate, the current model, we have an ATV. It is designed to go into small places, but it isn't made to sit and idle while a police officer goes about his duty. And when you have to shut it off each time and and people on the force tend to let it idle. And by doing that, it has broken down and it is more or less not working more than it is out on the road. So not that I'd want to replace that, but I would like to have one that is a four-door ATV that is made to idle, because they have them that are made to idle, that fit in small places such as parks. And the reason that I make this motion, because we have a police officer that his route is the South Common, Appleton Street, and that area there has asked time and time again for the vehicle that is broken down, which is fixed, and then it's broken down again. For some reason, they won't let him use that. I don't I don't understand why. I have never seen a police officer so concerned about helping people in that area. He works very well with the city's Lowell Co-op team. And he was telling me that it's very important that he have one to maneuver quickly. There's so much activity going on there all day long. One person on the beat, that doesn't cut it. It doesn't cut it. You'd have to be there to see what I'm talking about. And I'm not asking to just get money out of thin air. There is first responder money, and I'm thinking maybe we could get it out of that. So if through you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Manager, if we could try to make things easier for people, to help more people, it'd be like walking here and there. I see him walking the beat from one end of the park to the other to the this. There's always something going on there. And I don't know how he does it by himself, but he is. And it's, I'm just asking. He does not probably want me to say anything, but I am because I think that it would help him. We try to improve the police department and give him the tools to work with. This would be one of those things. Thank you.
Maybe we could look at trading the one in that's always breaking down.
There you go.
Yeah.
Or else that. Yes, you could.
Yeah, we'll put Connor right on that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliot, request Transportation Subcommittee meet regarding traffic congestion on West Meadow Road during school hours. Seconded by Council Drinkwater, Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two things they have on West Meadow Road, since the school opened, there's major traffic congestion at some points in time. And then at other points in time, there's crazy speeding that we learned and heard about last night, again, on the Zoom meeting. So I know this is a long-term problem. We've actually met in the past about, I think Council Mercy filed a motion relative to school buses and where parents are parking. And there seemingly for some time, there was some solution. But I do think we need to revisit. And I'm and I'm sure this is not just the old the only school location that there are complaints. This one, we got an email about from a resident on Acropolis Road. So short-term solution, I don't know what it is, Madam. I've I've been there two or three days and the backup is is significant. This is a major cut through as a result of the new market basket and people trying to to avoid the light and get across the bridge. So I know I know there's no quick fix. However, residents and the neighborhood organ group have fielded complaints and, you know, we have to, you know, we have to come up with a a solution. So during the morning, it's backed up. And then at other parts of the time, they're speeding. So one of the requests was to get a radar from last night, I believe. I believe there's only, is there just one, Madam Manager, in the city?
I'm not.
That was a question, if there's one. If and if not, maybe we should probably look into trying to getting maybe another one.
There are two, but we can check.
Okay, I believe last night Captain, that was on the phone on the Zoom call, was going to look into it. But that's the motion. And yeah, thank you all. I'm going to call the Transportation Subcommittee week for next week. We'll deal with this one if it's referred as well as the church parking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliot, request City Manager have Inspection Service take immediate measures to address trash issues on White Street, Sarah Avenue, Gersham Street, and other adjacent adjacent streets, in particular, the rental properties. Seconded by Council Mercy, Council Elliot.
The motion speaks for itself. We've got pictures and pictures and pictures, whether it's school, the kids that are back in school at these particular streets. We received complaints from the neighbors. The good news was the infom, the memo that we got tonight that I'll share with the neighborhood group and as well as residents that a health inspector, fingers crossed that we can get someone and hire them to start doing inspecting. But in the meantime, and I know I've I know Mr. Slagel did jump all over this and sent inspectors over. So I appreciate, I know the neighbors appreciate it, but it's going to be a long, long-term problem. And I know recommendations came out of the Neighborhood Subcommittee and Council Mercy made a motion about reaching out to the the university. And that may, you know, that that may be the issue. I know over the weekend, this is a little bit of a sign, but there was big parties in one section of the neighborhood that's sort of separate from trash. But I think collectively, a discussion needs to be take place with the university leaders because it's we need to nip it in the bud with the trash, the parties, the noise, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just, this motion specifically was on trash. But I think from the meeting last night, I just mentioned it, mentioned the other the other items. So thank you. And that's that's it on the motion.
Thank you. Council Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, last night at the Neighborhood PCC meeting, there's a request to have a Neighborhood Subcommittee concerning this. Madam Manager, if we could have Representative from UMass Lowell, you know, the student director and so forth. I understand there's a change in that position over there. And we can just, you know, go over what the rules, the code of conduct is for those students living off campus. I understand that there is one and we can hopefully make some changes for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? All those in favor of the motions, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Elliot, request City Manager have DPW provide a report regarding the number of beaver dams addressed at streams, brooks, and other bodies of water in the Potteckerville area, including those adjacent to the West Meadow Conservation Area, and provide regular inspections. Seconded by Council Noon, Council Elliot.
It's a long motion, but it speaks for itself, Madam Manager. And I have to say Christine Clancy and her staff reaching out to the the people we have contracted with. There was quite a blockage that when there's a lot of rain, you know, these beavers, they they block up. you know, these beavers, they, they block up the culverts. This was on Malden. I actually was out at, right off Wellworth Ave. There's, there's actually an apparatus that has been installed at the city. And clearing it makes a difference. So the motion speaks for itself. But it seems like the, as quickly as we break them down, sometimes they build them back up. And that's what beavers do, I understand. But perhaps we can get some regular, regular routine on taking a look at them. But DPW did go out, they cleared it, and the water went down. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rourke.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very similar motion to the one filed back in May. Asking pretty much for the same thing, with the beaver dams and the inspection of the brooks and so forth. I was in, have been in the area of Shirley, Malden, Merle's Ave. The neighbors do report an improvement, especially with the recent rain that we have had. I did speak to the Assistant City Manager, who did report back the clearing of beaver dams, which has been a great assist. But if you just could report back on the inspection of the, of the different brooks, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Rourke. Request City Manager update the council regarding traffic engineer position. Initiate the addition of a traffic consultant to the Department of Planning and Development. Seconded by Councilor Samaras, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there was this discussion, I guess, a few months ago. And the plan at the time, that you put in place was, I guess, to find a headhunter or something like that, to look for a traffic engineer. To my knowledge, that has not happened as of yet. And, you know, I know there are a number of standing motions that cannot be answered and cannot be completed without the assistance of a traffic engineer and/or a consultant. So, we've been without one now for, I believe, over, well over a year. And, you know, unless the Madam Manager, you have someone in mind or, you know, people that have applied for a position. You know, traffic now is the number one problem in the city. We get phone calls, emails about it on a daily basis. So I think it's time that we look into a consultant to see how we can improve the traffic flow in the city. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, question? Councilor Elliott.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an important motion, and it's been frustrating. We have hired the Collins Center, correct, Madam Manager, for both, I think for a couple of positions.
We have.
The auditor of the Assessor and this position.
Correct.
And we're not getting any bites. So, well.
I think the Collins, I think it's in the early stages.
It's in the, okay, good. That's good to know. However, looking down the road, we're competing with private industry for traffic engineers or other, you know, the state salary-wise. Is it, but we are still doing some motions, is that correct? I mean, we have a plan of doing.
Alan Herrera is answering. He's the assistant or the traffic engineer. And he's been doing what he can, you know, to answer those. There are some of the motions that are pretty complicated and would require a study, perhaps. And I think when we, we had suggested going out for information or proposal or RFI, to see what, what there was out there to bring somebody in. And it would be to kind of prioritize things that, you know, we, we need to look at. So I know Kristi McCall is here. She could maybe answer. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Well, if we can't get a traffic engineer to meet certain very specific qualifications, what are other communities doing? I'm presuming that not everyone has a traffic engineer and that they're, they're addressing traffic problems, whether it's stop signs or cut-throughs or things like, like that. Like you say, some things require more of a study. However, in the meantime, to speak to Councilor Rourke's point, it's been out for a year. We've had nothing for a year. And we're not getting any, you know, anyone really quite interested. And fingers crossed that the Collins Center can, can do a better job. However, in the meantime, are there, can we hire somebody else that doesn't have maybe the high qualifications that can do some of the other, what I would say, sort of common sense or practical motions that come forward for, I'll just use stop sign or cut-through streets, make them a one-way, you know, things like that. And then still pursue it.
We've explored, we've discussed whether we change the qualifications from traffic engineer. Christine, if you want to address it, you know, just to see if there's more of a pool. But there are some things you do need that traffic engineer background for.
Sure.
But to your point, maybe, maybe not everything.
Right. I mean, like you say, maybe that, maybe we do hire someone to do some of the more complicated traffic issues that we address. And then, so, okay, you're on it. I think that's, I don't want to belabor this, this point.
Yeah. I think the concern is there's a backlog building. And Alan and, you know, Christine are trying to address those that can be addressed.
Yeah, we have, we have some options. And so we can put a report together to say, but I think what we want to do is prioritize the motions that we can't answer, that we need just, we need that PE or we need that additional technical assistance. And we can't ask, obviously Commissioner Clancy and City Engineer Ching Chang are PE's, but they have their own projects and priorities. So we can get a report together with different options. We have some funding available to help us. And I think maybe we can implement some of the speed hump projects. And I think that was a lot of motions addressing some of the speeding issues. Or we, because we haven't paid the salary and wage of the transportation engineer for a year, we might have some flexibility with hiring someone through that as well. So we can get a report together for the council.
This sounds crazy, but speed bumps is music, music to my ears. And I'm sure to my colleagues as well. I just think it's something that we need to, to do. Quite frankly, and I'll stop here. I was in Lawrence just the other day, and they have them down Main Street. And they have them at their, at all their schools. And then Councilor Drinkwater, you know, brought that up. So that's, there's a plan on the horizon. So, thank you. It's a, you know, good motion and look forward to the response.
Thank you. Councilor Samaras, do you have?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, you know, let's face it, every councilor here has raised some type of serious issue regarding traffic, not only speeding, but especially construction all over the city. So at this point, I think you outlined it well when you said, this assistant engineer is handling a lot of the issues. But I think if you hired this consultant, we could come in and clean up a lot of the issues. And when I look at the construction that's going on, it's amazing that anyone can move in the city as, as they do. But we are receiving a lot, we've received a lot of complaints before. And we talked about speeding and the need for speed bumps and all those things. Everybody has spoken about that. But I'm hearing more and more, as COVID is lifting, thank God, but the traffic situation's now all over the city becoming horrendous. And the thing is, you know, who, what do they do? They blame all of us and they say, what are you doing about it? But it is a far more complex situation. So I think this motion's good in the sense of giving you, for a short period of time, expertise to be able to help, you know, deal with some of these situations. I think, I think the department needs that. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Rourke. Request City Manager provide an update regarding construction bridge projects throughout the city. Seconded by, I didn't hear that, Councilor Noon? Councilor Noon, Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this one was filed probably four or five months ago. It's just good to get an update maybe a couple of times a year. And I think the major three projects that most people are concerned about is Beaver Brook, Central Street Bridge, and then Pottecker Street. And I know they had, did have a schedule in the beginning and pushed back for some reason or another. And if you just get an update, I know that that would be very beneficial to, again, to traffic in the city and getting people moving around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the bridges? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, by Councilor Drinkwater. Request City Manager provide update regarding the Golo Shared Streets Projects and Corridors Studies and possible funding sources to implement recommend, recommended improvements. Seconded by Councilor Chow, Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this actually because I had received some outreach from, from a few different residents regarding issues regarding traffic on, on Appleton Street. Pedestrian issues, traffic issues. And I guess in this particular instance, rather than try to play traffic engineer myself, I had, I had recalled that there was actually a fairly extensive and really good study done through the Golo program on the Appleton Street corridor, along with a couple of other corridors, with some really good suggestions coming out of that, that study. I know for a number of those corridor studies, they needed to be funding implemented. I know there were a couple of projects through the Golo program that, that were funded, including right on, on Merrimack Street outside of City Hall. So just, you know, wanted to get an update on, on whether there was, you know, funding and a path to implement some of the recommendations that, that came through the Golo studies, which incorporated a lot of good feedback from, from residents on those important business corridors for the, for the city. So anyway, just think it would be great to get an, an update on the work that went into the program. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Chow. Request City Manager contact property owner at the corner of Nottingham and Powell Streets to address the unsightly overgrowth of bushes and trees on the property. Seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property has high fences all around the property. From the inside of property, there are overgrown bushes and vines and all kind of plants growing inside the fence and outside the fence onto the sidewalk. And, you know, there's a neighborhood in that area. They take really good care of the properties. But it's such a, a small, compacted area, they can clean up their properties. But because of the messiness from this one huge property, the residents just don't feel like they have a good quality of life of cleanliness of public space. You know, they look at the high fence already, but they have to look at also at the overgrown bushes and plants and what have you, in addition to letting notify the property owner knows, maybe have them take care of the property, cut down those bushes or trees or whatever, to make it a little bit more nice to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Councilor Chow. Request City Manager have LPD provide a report regarding enforcement of noise ordinance on low riders vehicles in the city. Seconded by Councilor Conway, Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely understand that our police, men and women, they're very busy keeping all the residents safe. They're busy keeping guns off the street, responding to emergency calls, domestic issues, traffic issues, all kind of things, to keep all of them safe, which is a very good quality of life for, for the city to have. The second half of the good quality of life is for the residents to enjoy some quietness. And with these low-riding vehicles on the road, that they're also loud. They, because they're also low, they hit like the street also when they go over bumps, make all kind of noise and scare the neighbors and so forth. So maybe just have some kind of a, a, a plan of how, you know, what else the police department can do also. I know they're busy with everything else. But I, I think this is also important, just to have some kind of plan of enforcement to see how, you know, we can minimize this, I believe the illegals even. You know, if, if the police officer sees them, what's their plan of action? What can they do just to rid of these low-riding vehicles? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion tonight, by Councilor Samaras. Request City Manager provide a report regarding the status of the cement stands at Colley Stadium. Seconded by Councilor Rourke, Councilor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, as you know, we formed a private nonprofit group to work on Colley Stadium. And the news that I've received, the good news that we received, that they have raised the money to do the Boys and Girls locker. I mean, and that's, that's a wonderful report. But I know that there's a lot, there's some serious issues with the stadium. But we do need some type of timeline as to, well, first, what is wrong? You know, what things have to be corrected? And if possibly, if there could be a timeline as to, you know, the city meeting with its capital expenditure, taking care of the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Councilor. And we will get you a report. We did hire the consultant to do an assessment out at Colley of the grandstand. We did amend somewhat their, their scope because, as had been requested by the superintendent in concern about the condition, especially in light of the collapse of a hotel in Florida of a concrete structure. So we asked them to assess the stand as follows. Is it safe for people to be on the stand or safe for people to be in as an initial scope? And they did give us that report just last week, that it is safe. So that's not a concern. The stands can be used both inside and outside. But they, they do have to continue the greater scope of investigation. So we will, I don't have a timeline from them, but we did ask them to give us that report early on, especially because the football season was starting last week, so.
No, that's terrific. Thank, no, thank you for that update. Appreciate that.
Councilor Rourke.
That's actually very good news.
Yeah.
I'm sure a relief to yourself. But in the scope of the project of what needs to be done over there, that's actually tremendous news. I mean, I hope that once that's taken care of and, I know it's $200,000 that's already set aside.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for that. But we, we now need to understand exactly what has to be repaired, how, you know, the leaks, things like that, so that those can be addressed. But, but we were concerned about just making sure the integrity of the structure was sound. And, and we did get that report, fortunately.
And I understand that was a major concern at the time.
It was a major concern. And I think another community had a similar situation with their stand and couldn't use it. And so we wanted to be absolutely certain that it was safe.
That is actually very good news. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any announcements tonight? Councilor Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to wish Lowell High School Fall Sports Athletes the best of luck. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, we all received this email, I think. But tomorrow, there is a Joint Committee on Election Laws. A hearing is being held tomorrow at 12 o'clock. And the home rule petition that was filed by Representative Vanna Howard relative to an act amending Chapter 230 of the Acts of 1954, which this council adopted, is being heard tomorrow. So folks can register to testify. And I plan to do so, and maybe my colleagues can follow suit. This is regarding the election, you know, the, the options for election that we decided to put a home rule petition for, early voting, mail-in voting, et cetera. Is that, is that correct? Do I have that right, Madam?
I believe so. So we've had a couple of, but we did have a home rule petition, but.
Right. So I just want to make that announcement, that we can Zoom in. It's a Zoom meeting, and the more support we have, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager, why don't you tell us about Hovey Park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know, you should have this on your desk tonight, that next Wednesday, the 22nd of September at 4:00 p.m., we will have a, an opening or ribbon-cutting of Hovey Park. You know, this is at 266 Aiken Avenue. This is the, a park, as you recall, having some of the oldest playground equipment. This will be the first fully accessible park for all children, children of special needs, as well as all children. And so it's, it's an exciting project. I want to commend DPD from taking this concept to fruition through financing and getting this project done. So I want to make sure everybody knows about that. And I know the neighborhood's very excited about this park that will cut the ribbon. And then, lastly, I just want to give a special thanks to Sue Lemay. As you all know, Sue had retired. She wasn't retired long. We brought her back as an interim, thankfully, as our, she's been helping us on assessing. But she headed up, as she always does, an employee appreciation luncheon today, which was a great success. So many thanks to Sue and those who helped her. But she's been the driving force. And so I want to give a special shout-out to her because job well done today, including the weather. So, thank you, Sue.
All right. And thank you for today.
And I don't know who won the cornhole tournament, but I'm going to go out and make a wild guess. It's probably DPW, so.
Thank you. Motion adjourned by Mr. Rourke, seconded by Mrs., Ms. Mercia. Thank you.